Okay, it's just about seven o'clock. Ooh, that was close. It's called the Town of Batavia Planning Board Meeting to Order for Tuesday, April 19th. Our first order of business is a public hearing. Kim, could you read the notice, please?
Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by Benderson Development LLC to construct two buildings to be used for retail restaurants and two drive-through lanes with a total of 10,752 square feet. This is in a commercial district at 8363 Lewiston Road in the Town of Batavia. Tax map number 8-1-21.2. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 19th at the Batavia Town Hall, 3833 West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York, at 7:00 p.m., at which time all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. A copy of the application is on file at the Town Hall for review. Notice of Public Hearing has been printed in the Batavia Daily News. By order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jezyski, Chairman.
Hey, thank you. As all our public hearings are, we give everyone the opportunity to speak. We will call upon you. We ask that you give your name and your address for the secretary and be respectful to everyone else because everyone has different opinions. Before we start, we're going to have a review of the project by our Benderson people and you are John...
I'm Matt Oats with Benderson. James is not able to be here tonight.
James isn't here. And you, give us your name again?
Matthew Oats.
Matthew Oats, okay. And you are?
Catherine Rowe.
Catherine Rowe. Thank you.
Okay, so just to kind of give everyone an overview of the project who haven't seen it before, we are going to try to redevelop the former Kmart parking lot. So in this, right now, there's an existing building there and we are proposing a 4,000 square foot proposed restaurant. And we are also proposing a retail restaurant that is 4,752 square feet with a 2,000 square foot uncapped coffee shop. Now, this project's going to increase the green space and landscaping, especially, you'll see here on Lewiston Road, this is going to look a lot nicer with this green space area here. We are also going to put in new curbing and new pavement around both these buildings and the entrance. We are updating the utilities and we are also putting in new site lighting. So with that being said, both of these buildings require a special use permit for the drive-throughs. So we make sure that each of the drive-throughs have sufficient stacking. And we did get some engineering comments back, so we will be addressing those when we submit it. And I think we are just waiting on the traffic impact study from the town.
That's right.
If anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I got a question. How many spaces are left?
Well, you're going to have an opportunity in a minute, Jim.
She asked me if there was any questions. Jerry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Jerry.
Go ahead.
Jerry Arena.
Okay.
Okay, how many spaces are left? You see, how many spaces are green space take? I have in my notes, you said Kmart had 366 parking spaces. Now, at the time Kmart was built, I believe they were given kind of a variance, you know, a little less parking spaces. And I'm reading in your application that the two restaurants are going to take 54 parking spots. So 366 minus 54 is 312. Now, you just said green space. I'd like to know how many spots they take. How many spots do the actual buildings take? How many spots does the dumpsters take, the snow removal? And what else would there be that you gotta consider? The drive-arounds. So I mean, I guess my question is to you, please, is how many spaces will be left? Because it's your intention, according to bribery, you've got the Benderson property up for sale all over United States, I thought I read. And one day, you're gonna want to fill that. That's understandable. But how many spots are left for the 16,000 square foot Kmart building? You say, you said today earlier, you said about a vacant parking lot. I don't understand where any parking lot's vacant. I understand the building's vacant. A parking lot, it's kind of like an oxymoron that the parking lots are vacant. So in short, how many spaces do we have left? And I guess the planning board was pretty excited when I read some of the news articles. And one of the planning board members commented that they were excited to fill the rest of the Kmart with retail. So that's your intention, is it? Fill the Kmart? And how many spots would Kmart, the 16,000 square feet, how many are left? I can't quite add them up.
Well, right now, this is the existing vacant building. And right now, we do not have any plans to fill that vacant building. So once we have the traffic study, once we do decide to put something in there, we'll have to have another traffic study.
Are you calling for a hardship? Do you have a hardship? Does Benderson have a hardship?
Maybe Dan Lee can jump in on this.
If I may just respond accordingly. This only being reviewed for the two front out parcels, should anything go into the Kmart building, it will have to apply to, or it'll be applicable to the building and zoning code and all the zoning codes set forth by the Town of Batavia would not be approved. So as far as this parking space requirement, as per our code, anything moving forward, they have to comply with our code. Should they put in for a variance at that point, then yes, it would be a self-created hardship. So if they were to move forward and need 400 parking spaces and not have that, it most certainly would be a self-created hardship at that point, Jerry.
Dan, would you agree? It kind of seems like you only have enough parking spaces to fill that, when they fill that building?
For the front two, they do have enough.
No, no, the Kmart building, you're not going to leave the 16,000 square feet building empty.
I understand your perspective, but I can't make that not having a crystal ball, knowing what would go into Kmart at this time.
Can anybody tell me how many spaces are left for the 16,000 square feet of buildings?
Yes, if we subtract that out, we can let you know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, with this public...
I'd be happy to go over all of your questions with you, even whenever you want to meet. I can answer the questions that you've asked them, just on what they've provided us. I would have no problem sitting down with you.
This public hearing is on the drive-throughs because that's what the special use permit is for. So we're particularly concentrating on that. But of course, we'll answer questions if you have them. And I'm sure Dan will get back to you with the answer to your question.
Anything we can help answer on?
Yeah.
Well, I would think the vacant building's a big part of what's considered going forward.
It's not what we're doing tonight, though.
I think it should be.
Well, well, it's not. It's only a public hearing tonight and then our next meeting, we're not taking any action on this tonight. We're only getting input from the public so that, to help us make decisions. And so that's why we're going to give you an opportunity to talk. So who signed up, Kim?
You're the only one.
You're next.
Who's he?
You work.
Okay, where do I?
Anyplace you're comfortable. If you're comfortable sitting there or if you're comfortable standing.
My stuff out? Don't you have a podium?
Yeah, we do, but I didn't pull it out. It's behind there.
I can get that out for you, Jerry.
Well, thank you.
Sure. I'm impressed.
Thank you. I'll try to talk loud, but...
That's okay.
I'm an old man now.
We want to hear you. We want to hear you, Jim.
I hope that to be true because, you know, sometimes you think these public hearings are just a formality. And, you know, I hope you sincerely mean that you'd like to hear from me. Because this is really the last place I want to be on a Tuesday night. But it's the first place I need to be. I love Batavia. I care about its future. I care about my fellow citizens and care about their safety and quality of life. The quality in life and safety of its constituents should be a priority for planning board members. And I think this is a horrible idea. Horrible idea. The traffic congestion, it'll be like you're going through Tokyo or New York City. When you fill that, it's all about filling the Kmart building. And we don't want to really talk about that tonight, but we know Benderson will be back the trough and asking to fill that building.
But he'll have to meet all of those codes.
Yeah, yeah, somehow I think they will. Required by law, I got a notice of public hearing here. Thank you for the invitation. The mere fact that I got one represents the fact that this special use permit affects my property at 8360 Lewiston Road and my neighbors. The gun store, the car dealership, Calvin Nichols, the land that I have on Arena Parkway facing Lewiston Road. I just shake my head when I see this and I'm trying not, you know, if I act like I'm going to be angry, if I'm perceived as I'm angry, it's because I really am. I just flabbergasted that this could get this far. I wish every citizen could have got a notice like I got. Everyone, not only in Batavia, county Batavia, city Batavia, Genesee County, because it affects them when they do their holiday shopping. It's a... The people I've talked to logically, they either don't know about this hearing, and I want to thank the Batavia Daily News. They've been good to me all my life. They, Batavia News, published my letter to the editor, online and a hard copy. Thank you, Batavia Daily News, for trying to get it out. The people that don't know about it...
It was advertised also in the Batavian and...
Well, I'm thanking the Daily. I'm thanking the Daily News. Because they published my, they published my letter to the editor. The people that I do talk to, they logically, and I say logically, assume that these three new businesses, now, sometimes they say two, well, it's two buildings, three businesses. They logically assume that when they hear the news, just, do you want me to read it here? That they're going to go into the old Kmart, which would be the best spot for them. I don't feel sorry for Benderson. They've got, they can put the businesses in. I don't care how much it cost them. I don't care if they got to knock part of Kmart down and build a drive-through. This is what most people think, that it's going to go into the old Kmart. There's problems with this special use permit on several levels, on several levels, and I don't even know where to start. I just, I'm so frustrated with this. My main theme here is at what point do we stop creating and compounding traffic flows on Lewiston and Park Roads? Surrounded by traffic flow problems with no sidewalks, this area of Lewiston and Park Road will become more dangerous than ever for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. I've never seen a commercial district. Of course, you know, the old timers got it right, the planners, they wanted to put, the master plan was to put the commercial into Route 5, four-lane highway, four-lane highway, not Lewiston Road or Road to Oakfield. And that's where the master plan, because every town has a master plan for commercial, residential, and you know, how they do things. Well, things got turned around, okay? So here we are. So my question is, at what point do we stop creating traffic flow problems? Because there's problems. There's big problems. I'm afraid to go down Park Road at night because one day, I'm a law-abiding citizen and somebody might jump out at me from Batavia Downs and I'm sitting in my attorney's office facing a vehicle manslaughter charge. And this is where, as you can see, their entrance is going to come out on the Park Road, as if Park Road isn't a problem already. Just bear with me. Like I say, if I sound angry, I don't mean to be. Okay, we're not putting a carnival with a Ferris wheel into the plaza for the weekend here. We're talking about 10,752 square feet. And we're not playing a game of SimCity where we can just push a button after the buildings are up and have them collapse because you feel like you're driving down Main Street, Tokyo, or New York City during the holiday season. I tell people, and I see it, I got the front row seat, running my business at 8360 Lewiston Road. Traffic, I'd say to them like this, nonstop, nonstop. You want to have a flea market? You want to put something next to my pizzeria? They don't stop. They stop when the light turns red in Park Road and then you're going to have to scoot out because the light's going to change again. So that's my key thing here. I got it involved in my notes. I want to know, it's all about couple, it's funny if you don't, if you just knock Kmart down, but coupled with the occupancy of a massive Kmart retail building in the future, the entrance and exit points on Lewiston and Park Road will not safely, safely, safely or adequately handle the additional 10,752 square feet of retail space? I got my notes to show you C40, but you got it right there. And it's a clear picture, there's not a whole heck of a lot of parking spots left when Benderson comes to the trough and asks you to fill that Kmart building, which seems like in the notes that I read, the planning board was quite giddy about, excited that even offered to, "Well, you can fill it with retail space," somebody said. Okay, the other thing, just like in an eminent domain situation, if you have other options, you'd think you'd want to use them. Because I think there's a lot of other options. The biggest option is that, you know, they'll say, "Well, why can't you fill the Kmart?" This is the one that come, Batavia is really sought after right now. Batavia's a hot commodity between Buffalo and Rochester. People will come into Batavia. And you can put them, when you don't have to give them a special use permit, you can put them where, you know, there's places where they can go. And what I've got written down here is, Town of Batavia, is options available for development. One, the Kmart space. Commercial property is available in the immediate area. Four sites got land on Route 5. I was kind of hoping that things would correct themselves when Kentucky Fried Chicken went out on Route 5 and it's saying, "Well, maybe things will have a way of correcting themselves." And of course, you know, I'll address it, I have property for sale. And when you can't shoot down my message, the internet cowards, "I'm worried about competition." Now, that's really funny. I've been in business since 1976. I'm not worried about another commercial business. I'm worried about the government more than anything. The government can put me out of business and they seem to be working on it. The competition is not what I'm worried about. The others swipe at me as, "Well, I'm mad because they don't put the land, they don't put it on the land I have for sale." My land for sale, it doesn't need any zoning permit. It's at the intersection of Route, Lewiston Road and Veterans Memorial Drive. It's in the BJ's Plaza. All the traffic would be regulated by the traffic light. It's visible from Lewiston Road, part of the BJ's Plaza, and it's for sale and doesn't require any kinds of permits.
We're going to have a traffic study available for you to look at, probably in a week or two?
I believe that's about the time when Tom and Steve said.
I talked to Steve earlier and he said before the next meeting, there are efforts who we are hiring, not Benderson, we are working with, to get a traffic study done of this site prior to any action being taken on.
Yeah, we are concerned, Jerry, about...
If that did come back as a concern, then that obviously would have to be addressed.
Safety is a big issue. What goes in must come out. If I go to Batavia Downs and I want to turn into Kmart, I got to wait for the light to turn red, of course, coming, heading towards Oakfield. And then a couple of cars could scoot through and then just start pouring out of Park Road. My concern for my business is you're going to have a line, just like my poor buddy, Mike Barrett. He's got to put a sign out in front of his business with the way the Dunkin' Donuts went down, but that's a different issue. Don't block the driveway. There's going to be a lot of cars trying to get in and out of there. And I just don't, and again, my premise is, and I guess I'm not supposed to talk about it tonight, you got, you know, you can sit here all you want and say, "Well, we're filling a vacant parking lot." No, no, the parking lot's vacant, the building's vacant. So I'm looking forward on that. I wanted to ask this Mr. B because people, he's not here today, you know, people made some statements that it's not going to affect. And Matthew Oats here, an engineering director for Benderson. These two businesses would be located along Lewiston Road using existing entrances to the parking lot off Lewiston and Park. The Kmart building itself is not part of the venture. Okay. Not part of the venture. Planning Director Felipe Altomari stated that development would pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. I disagree. Now, this one here, maybe he's here. Who is, who is Planner Tom SCHUBMHL? Are you here, Tom? No, county planner? He commended Mr. Oats here for doing a nice job controlling traffic on Lewiston. I'm confused by that. What did you do to control the traffic on Lewiston?
You know, this is getting way off where we're supposed to be. We're really supposed to be talking about the drive-through.
Excited for the project, going to start redeveloping this section of Batavia and hopefully bring an enhancement to the area. I disagree.
We can give you phone numbers of the people that you mentioned.
I'm hoping you're going to represent me. I don't need, I'm your constituent. I hope you'd give me phone. I hope you'd be doing that. Here's their proposal. I'm almost done. I'm not going to be here forever. Here's Benderson Development, proposed project. The project will take a vacant property and a large vacant parking lot and revitalize the front of the subject property along with road front, just significantly improving this property in the area. I totally disagree. It's going to improve the area. We believe that this project is a significant improvement to an existing vacant parcel of land and we look forward to working with the town of this, with the town on this project. Disagree. Okay, and part of the application that you graciously allowed me to pick up and signed by Mr. Oats here, Matthew Oats, with a proposed action resulting with substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. 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 I don't see how that's mathematically possible. Any, are there any, are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? Check mark, yes. I don't see any sidewalks, bicycle routes. Maybe I'm missing a, maybe Matthew, you can show me where your bicycle routes are. I see babies, two in one day, one in a wagon, getting pushed in the street, one in a stroller. And then you get your handicap people that got the flags and they're driving their little thing. The mailman's got to be afraid of getting hit. At what point do we stop compounding? We've got a problem there. Benderson doesn't need to go in there and complicate things. My land's for sale. Go ahead, say what you want. "Oh, he's mad." That's not what it is. "Oh, he's mad because they won't..." You know, we paid a lot of money to taxpayers for that intersection. If Panera Bread, Popeyes, whoever, coffee shops, Starbucks, they want to come in, we got a spot for them. Let's make it easy on the citizens. Let's consider the citizens' quality of life, what they're going to have to do on Thanksgiving and Christmas. It's a nightmare now for the holidays. What goes into that parking lot's got to come out. It's pretty simple logic. The use of land, you know, now there's, there's a possibility, I'm not going to hide it, there's a possibility that if you go through with this, I will file an injunction. I've done it in the past, we're familiar with that, with Benderson putting the BJ's Plaza in the residential area. I fought it. I fought the good fight. I lost. Took a year and a half, cost some money. But like I say, I care about Batavia, I care about the citizens. It's just a bad idea. And if I do proceed, there's a lot of legal stuff here that could be talked about. I mean, the purpose of this would be, many legal things, it's not based exclusively by desire to make money out of the property. And I'm sure this is what Benderson's doing, trying to squeeze every nickel out of that property. And that's not something you can get a variance for. The Glen Allen zoning code was adopted with the purpose of protecting and promoting the public health, safety, comfort, property values, and general welfare. So if there should become a legal challenge to this, I think my lawyers would have a pretty good, pretty good shot. And I think I'm just about done here. And I certainly thank you for listening to me. I hope I haven't offended anybody. I've always said that, you know, I like to be low-key. When you say, "Well, yeah, Jerry Arena's Pizza," how do you stay low-key? You know, you put your name on a business. I don't look, I'm not looking for 15 minutes of fame or anything. I love Batavia. And I just hate to see, hate to see this happen when there's other, there's other options. Let's make Batavia safe again. Get your ducks in a row if you do wish your permit. Get sidewalks, people walking down Walmart, any of those things. It's a nightmare. It's got to be the worst commercial development possibly in the whole Western New York, if not the whole New York. It's dangerous. Let's make Batavia safe again. And thank you again for listening to me. Sorry if I offended anyone.
And you didn't, and we appreciate your opinion. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic?
Just for the special use permit, I know we're to focus on the special use permit just to discuss that portion of it. Being associated with the drive-throughs, as the town has said, they've hired SRF to do a study. In regards to that, though, with the drive-throughs, both facilities provide more than sufficient stacking. In addition, both entrances to the drive-through facilities are contained in the site as well. So even if there was a time during peak where it possibly overflowed out, they're still contained within the project sites. So there is also still no chance of an impact to Park Road or Lewiston Road based on the drive-throughs, the way they've been designed. There's no proposal for a drive-through entrance specifically to come off any public streets. It's all been self-contained within the site. But showing the stacking and the amount that we have provided, that's based off numerous developments we've done and knowing what we need to provide to provide for proper traffic flow. Just to address that one, one portion of it related to the special use permit.
Thank you. Okay, now, the board, if you have any questions of the engineers?
You have the public hearing open or?
Pardon me?
Public hearing is still open, you leave it open.
No. And I'll give you one more chance to speak if anyone wishes to. Kim, we're going to hit this lightly, but close the public hearing. And we'll now start our regular planning board agenda. Kim, could you call the roll call, please?
Paul Markacy. Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Janet the Law.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Brooks Holly.
Here.
Brittany Whitcomb.
Here.
Jennifer Zimbito.
Here.
You're all set, Kim.
Okay, I would designate our alternate members vote as voting members tonight since we have two members missing. Did everyone look at their minutes of the meeting of March 15th?
Yep.
Motion by Paul McCullough to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan Partridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone, any additions or corrections? I'm sorry, it's just that they're first. Okay, all in favor, aye. Thank you. Now, this is a time when you can, when the public can make comments on any other agenda items. But there's not too many people from the public here tonight, so I guess we will skip that. And the first thing we have here is discussion on the special use permit in the public hearing. If the board has any questions or any comments they wish to make. Don, you said you have something? No, you were just reminding me to close the hearing. Okay. Is there anyone here on the board that has a question, comment? Nope? Okay, then you're free to go. Thank you so much. You, the next time this will be on the agenda will be for the speaker and for action, but I can't tell you when yet. It's up to when you're ready.
Yep, not a problem. We'll go on date with Steve and Tom as well in regards to the traffic study and that schedule.
Okay, thank you very much for attending tonight. Okay, next on our agenda is Oatton Milk Products. They want to construct in addition to their existing plant. We need to do the secret tonight and the site plan review. Didn't I give it to you? Oh, okay, John's got it. John's going to... Is it okay? You're going to do one, he's going to do one. You're going to do Delina. Okay. Please give your names to the secretary for the...
My name is Rod Ives. I'm an engineer with Naprela Consulting. We are the civil engineers for the project. With me is Kelly Finch with Awaka. She can talk about any of the operational questions or issues and... She can talk about any of the operational questions or issues that come up.
You can make small voice, that's good.
Loud enough? I'm just screaming at my kids. So, we're here tonight. Alaca's proposing a small 3,200 square foot, plus or minus, a little bit over that, building addition. If you're familiar with the plant, it's kind of right on the south side. See you straightening. Are we still good over here? Okay. So it's just a small building addition. It's gonna go in an area that's currently paved, so we're not adding any impervious area to the site, so there won't be any impacts of stormwater runoff. Really, it's a cut-and-dry project. You know, like I said, we have to remove some pavement, relocate an alcohol drain line, and then the, keep going here, well, new building addition, whoops, with silo paths. So we did receive the engineer's letter. Kelly can talk about the general comments if you'd like that Tom brought up.
So, good evening, Kelly Finch. I just wanna speak to the details of the questions that were asked. The general comments, we're talking about the size of the tanks that we're putting in. We're putting in three tanks. One of the tanks' height is 15 feet by eight feet diameter, and there's two other tanks that are 28 feet by 12.5 feet in diameter. Those tanks are just additions to the current tanks. We just need more storage. That's the area of the plant where we're producing alcohol-based beverages and for some reason, the demand for alcohol. So, we're excited for this. There's not a huge increase in capacity, but what it does is it provides a continuity of operation for us. Right now, we'll have trucks load out, so we do peak and then we drop down and then we peak again as loadouts are happening throughout the day. So really, these storage tanks are in addition to the current storage tanks. Nothing really new and fancy, it's just more of what we already have to provide a more consistent consistency of operation. As far as the traffic goes, there was a question about increased traffic. Right now, we turn on average about four loadout trucks a day of bulk alcohol-based consumable drinks, and we're adding maybe two on average a day. So again, it's just more of a consistency of operation in the area of the business where we're running alcohol products.
Do these trucks come just during the day or do they come at night also?
Anytime, day or night. If we find a truck to come in, we have a heck of a time finding trucks, but we're trucking. But yes, 24/7, that plant is running. And, yeah, we can put probably up to six a day, so we're trying to maximize the existing building and fully utilize it all day, 24/7. So, time of day or night, that can happen. I think I covered at least the general comments, traffic patterns, the water sewer usage. Again, it's more of a consistency. We'll actually minimize the spiking, the up and down, and just have a more consistent drain based on the addition of these three tanks. And we're adding a building, but really, it's about, it's all about the tanks.
I'd like to ask you a question. I'm Don Partridge, I live next door.
Oh.
Okay, but last year, you built a big tank to the north. I'm just curious what that tank was for.
To the north, we have tank building.
It's way, it's a big, huge dome.
Yeah, it's for our wastewater treatment facility.
Wastewater treatment, I assume that.
Yes.
It's mainly storage?
It's the equalization basin. And what that does is that stores so we can properly process the waste, and it's extra capacity there. It's not the end of the wastewater conversation, we'll probably be back here talking again. Because again, we wanna be good stewards of the environment, and there's a lot, lot of good stuff going on. But that's one of the tanks, yes, to the north. Yeah, we've got tanks on the south, on the southeast, and on the north that we're putting in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to now do the seeker, and John's going to review that.
Yeah, we received your Part I short form EAF and reviewed it, and we'll conduct Part II short form tonight. And then, board members, if you guys have any comments or difference of opinion of what I choose versus what you think, let me know. Interject at any time. Question number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an updated land use plan or zoning regulations? That's no impact. Question two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land, use of land? That's no or small impact.
Will you mark those as a go?
Yep.
You did, okay.
Question three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? That's a no impact. It's gonna fit in with the complex. Question four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a CDA? And that's a no impact. Question five, will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing land or traffic? Effect changing infrastructure and mass transit biking or walkway? I think you touched on that tonight. There'll just be a couple more trucks, so that's a no impact. Question six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy as it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation? That's a no impact. You don't see any peak energy increase on this.
Like I said, more of a consistency of operation to reduce the peaks that we see today.
Question seven, will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies? You answered that tonight and said that it will not, it will keep it consistent. And B to that is public-private wastewater treatment utilities, and that is a no, or small impact. Question eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? That's no, fits right in. Question nine, will the proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources? And that is no. It's gonna be a parking area, correct?
Correct.
Question 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? That's a no. Again, it's in the existing parking area. And question 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And that is also no impact. Based on the information presented, I move for a negative declaration of no impact.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan Partridge. Roll call, please.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Paul McCola.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Brittany, yes. Jennifer.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, the seeker is done, and now we'll address the site plan review. The county planning board approved this. The proposed addition should pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. So that's been approved by county, so now it's up to us. Now, we've all had the information, we've all reviewed it, and we've had the review tonight. It's your pleasure.
I move for approval, contingent on final engineering review and approval.
Okay, motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooks.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Brittany, yes. Don.
Yes.
Paul McCola.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, you're in business. Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do for the town of Batavia.
Thank you for your support, and nice to meet you, neighbor.
We helped the hayfield shrug.
Okay, next on the agenda is Galena Development. They, let's see. They are proposing to construct, you know what? Why don't you tell us what you're proposing? Give us your names for the secretary.
I'm Steve Schultz with MRV Group.
I'm Jeff Radesi for the Galena Development Board. Sorry, I don't talk as loud as the last guy. Try to make it secure. This is Gateway Two Industrial Park over on Call Parkway. It was approved as an overall plan several years ago. The first building was built and occupied. It's lot one. Lot two and lot five are under construction now, like Galena Development. They were approved as 27,000 to 22,000 square feet. What they're proposing to now is add on to, this is U of R occupancy, add on 70, 7,800 square feet to lot two, and 6,600 square feet to lot five, which is promisingly what we've done to kind of balance this out with the overall industrial park. The total square footage of buildings approved for the overall was 135,000 square feet, so they've reduced the size of the lot three building, so the total still remains 135,000 square feet of building square footage.
So this is just a little change in your plan?
Correct. Yeah, it's just reorientating essentially. We'll have the same, same amount of impervious area, so our original drainage report, which actually was done by a previous engineer to the original plan, we have the drainage reports, that'll be fine, that'll stay the same because the amount of pervious will be the same. Exterior appearance of the façades will match the building because they're all being constructed now, so it's not like you're adding a sore thumb to the end of the building. It's all gonna look uniform and consistent in appearance on the exterior. And we were at the county planning, or Jeff was last week, and they were, they were
Okay, thank you. Our first thing to do tonight is a seeker, and that's gonna be done by Dan Partridge. You can sit if you want.
Oh, it's okay.
Whenever you're comfortable with.
Item one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the updated land use plan or zoning regulations? I have a no on that. Will the proposed action toll in change in the use or intensity of use land, of use of the land? Have a no on that. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Here again, I have no on that. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a CDA? I have no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Here again, item five is a no. Item six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Here again, that's a no. Will the proposed action affect existing public-private water supplies? No. Public-private wastewater treatment? No. Item eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? And that's a no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Here again, that's a no. Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And that's a no. Item 11, will the proposed action create an answer to environmental resources or human health? I have a no. I move that this would be a negative impact for the seeker.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who said that?
Brittany.
Brittany, okay. Roll call, please.
Don.
Yes.
Brittany, yes. Jennifer.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Paul McCola.
Yes.
Kathy Chazinsky.
Yes. Okay, our next thing is the site plan review. Now, this did go to county planning, and they approved it. The proposed site modification should pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. So.
I had a couple of questions. Greens, do you still have the same amount of green space on the site? Looks like, I know you said the pervious-impervious ratio is unaffected, but it looks like at the ends of the buildings, the green space is being taken up by building.
Yeah, overall, yeah, on these lots, we would have less, but overall, by reducing this, we increase the green space here an equivalent amount by taking out the same amount of building square footage. So overall, the whole park will have the same amount of green space.
And I assume the parking still meets the zoning requirements?
Yep. Yeah, we have more than required. 222 is required, and we have over 330.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, it's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
On the site plan? Approval for the site plan, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jennifer. Roll call, please.
Paul McCola.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Brittany, yes. Kathy.
Yes. Okay, you're in business also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, zoning enforcement officer report.
I don't have much to report tonight. Just wanted to give you an update on last night's ZBA meeting for CH4 biogas. The ZBA denied the variance request for biogas, so at this time, I don't know where it lies or if they're going to move forward with the process. I will be in touch with Sarah Gilbert, who's the engineer on that project moving forward, to see what their next steps are. I have not, as of yet, submitted anything to the county for the next month, but I do know that we do have the site plan review and special use permit for in front of the Kmart by Benderson, so.
If they're ready by then.
If they're ready, if everything's ready and we have the traffic reports, and we should have them, but if they are ready by then, then yes. Obviously, I appreciate Jerry showing up tonight and speaking, and any concerned citizens that come in and speak. And we've discussed as well, just to give you guys a little background, we have discussed the sidewalk stuff. And as far as engineering goes, as far as the town goes, we've discussed that, but there's always a disconnect because it's a matter of who's gonna take care, who's gonna maintain, who's responsible for. But those are always considerations when we're looking and reviewing things. So it's a great point brought up by him, and we would love sidewalks everywhere, but I don't know how the town overall feels on that.
Thank you.
So I can't, I can't speak on that, but those are things that have been a discussion in the past. They've had a discussion with Benderson, they've been discussed, I know, on board meetings, they've been discussed by engineering and the staff at the town as well. The main thing is, is the traffic study. Until we get the traffic study, we don't know what we don't know yet. So, once we receive the traffic study, it's gonna guide us in making the decisions and making the processes moving forward. Everything that Benderson has supplied to us so far, though, does meet all of the criteria in a commercial district. Their parking spaces meet the criteria in that district. This just so happens as, has a vacant building on the structure at this time. Should they do anything with it? It's going to have to meet the parking space requirement. I just want you guys to understand, and I guess get a different little perspective than what you've heard, because anything that moves forward whatsoever would need that. The only reason we had a public hearing on this in the first place were for the drive-throughs. So, should five buildings, six buildings, seven buildings wanna go in there, we would be doing site plan review on that. They would have to meet the same criteria for life safety, the same criteria for building safety, the same criteria for driveway spaces, parking spaces, but it would not require a public hearing. So the only reason we had that public hearing tonight was for the drive-through spaces, or for the drive-through areas on both buildings. Should we not have that, we wouldn't even have had public input, but it's always a positive, and I'll say it again, and I'm happy to meet with him. Just wanted to give you a little background on that. I haven't talked to him yet on it, but I look forward to doing that this week.
You know, so some negotiations still going on with Batavia Downs? Because if they bought it, they had parking lot.
I know nothing, I don't know anything about a negotiation going on with them.
Okay.
I know they had an agreement and they've used that parking lot, but I can't speak on their behalf, and I don't know what that agreement entails whatsoever. So, I've got nothing.
We'll wait and see on that building.
We're gonna wait and see. And I.
So, a question on that, Dan.
Yes.
Speaking of sidewalks, is there a mechanism that before the site plan gets approved or denied or whatever, can we request sidewalks? Because the sidewalk goes to Park Road, but it doesn't go across the Kmart property. And by having these two buildings, and Jerry rose a point up, can we have them at least put sidewalks across their property? And by having these two buildings and Jerry throws a point up, can we have them at least put sidewalks across their property?
That would be a discussion, I think, that would need to be, and if it comes from the planning board to the town board. Because it, the issue always gets into is if we request and require the sidewalks, who maintains the sidewalks? Who is liable for the maintenance of the sidewalks? Who's liable for the injury of the sidewalks? Who's liable if one heaves up? That's always been an ongoing issue. I know East Pembroke, there's massive issues with that, that they just, they haven't been maintained. They haven't been maintained throughout years and years and years. Some of them are heaping. They're not owned by the town of Batavia. They're owned by the, the parcels. According to the tax maps, according to everything on file and everything on record. So the issue is, is does the town board, number one, do they have the manpower? Do they have the staffing to go and do that? But is that something that they would wanna take out? So I don't think that's a question, and, and we discussed that with Dollar General, interconnecting that one, which never occurred yet because we're still at the standstill of what responsibility does the town want for the sidewalks? I don't have that answer, but that would be good if you wanna shoot an email to the town board. That might be something that they would wanna discuss, the sidewalk situation. If that's something you guys feel strongly about, which, I would love sidewalks everywhere. But who's liable for them? Who maintains them? How does that work into the whole impact of?
Do we have a work session tomorrow, Sharon?
We do.
Maybe I'll just step in at that, cause I'm coming to the solar meeting.
Okay. But we have, we have discussed sidewalks and we haven't gotten anywhere because of who's gonna maintain them.
I think my, my opinion, not only the maintenance part of it, but you don't wanna segment sidewalks everywhere and not have an interconnect. And this, this section of Batavia is not a walkable area. It's, it's a big box business.
Well, that's why I brought it up. The sidewalk goes all the way in front of Tops, right through the intersection of Park Road. Park Road's getting rebuilt. Yes, I understand that the sidewalk won't get all the way over to Walmart and Home Depot, but that's another five hundred feet, six hundred feet.
I think that this would be a great opportunity, and when I say this, for the comprehensive plan to focus on some interconnectivity of sidewalks. You don't want the pieceful, uh, piece metal, like John said, you don't want just one little piece here, separation, one little piece here. But maybe look at districting, maybe look at, and, and just have those discussions at least moving forward.
Oh, uh, sixty-three, out of our way.
The sidewalk to nowhere's. I know the sidewalk to nowhere's out there. I know that.
Yeah, but it's used.
Yes, it is.
It keeps them off the street.
Yep.
A lot of people walk out there and ride bikes and they get to the end of the sidewalk, which is down, that's what I call my south farm. And they're back on the road. So I mean, if it came down to the Shepherd Road, that'd be a little bit safer, but. So, just, just, this is just a point.
Dan, can you say why the zoning board denied CH4 biogas?
Yes, um, there were three specific reasons that they addressed. Um, the height being significant, it was a significant increase in the height variance. Um, it was required to have thirty or there was by our zoning schedule, thirty-five feet and forty feet. They requested over eighty-three feet, so they found that to be double. Uh, that was significant. One of the others was, uh, undesirable characteristic change of the neighborhood. It is in an agres district for one lot that they're proposing. It's an industrial in the other. But it would have an impact on the surrounding neighbors. And I would have to look up the third. Um, but it was also, John pointed out that it was a self-created hardship, which not one of them individually denied it, but the combination, I think, as a whole, is why they denied it. And it was, uh, it was a good meeting last night, so. Good questions, good points of view.
Hey, anything else, Dan?
I'm all good.
Okay, Sharon?
No, I'm, I'm good too.
Okay, well, I've only got a couple of things here. Um, did you all see that the Genesee Finger Lakes is giving, is going to have their workshop at, uh, at the college? So it's great, a great time for us to go. I've already done my application. Uh, Tressa will send a check, so you need to deal with her if you're going to attend. Make sure you get, I'll get your request into her. Is it, did anybody not get that information? Cause I'll send it to you if you didn't. Everybody's got it. Okay, so that and, uh, the solar meeting tomorrow. There's a public hearing on the, the, the change to the solar, um, zoning. And, uh, I talked to Greg today. He said we can count it as a meeting if we go. And since you didn't have a first meeting, you know, that'll help your case. So that's up to you, but anyone that goes can put it in as a meeting.
What, what time does that start?
Uh, what time does it start, Sharon? Seven?
Yes.
Seven o'clock. Sorry. Okay, Brittany. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brooks, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. I always ask an alternate to give that motion. And since Jen already added.
On what?
Well, we get you in the minutes that way.